Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much for joining us here at the District Office of Marion County Public Schools. My name is Kevin Christian. I am the Public Relations Director and the Director of Multimedia Productions for the District. And I believe this is the most, folks, we've had in this room in at least five or six years. So it's wonderful to have you here with us. Let me share a couple of things. First, today, obviously, we are here to see the Oath of Office and installation of three school board members. Two of those are brand-new to our school board, and of course, one is a returning board member. Voters, you, many of you in this room, elected these three people earlier this month. And school board members represent their respective districts, but all voters throughout the county actually vote on all five school board seats. Board members serve four-year staggered terms, and the three that you will see installed today, their term will be 2018 through 2022. Should they decide to run again, that could be renewed. That's up to them. And today, you'll see the support of friends, family, and loved ones from their lives who are here to support and witness this historic event in each of their lives. So we are going to go in district numerical order. The first will be District Three. That will be Mr. Eric Cummings. And administering his oath today will be Pastor Warren Hardaway from Beulah Missionary Baptist Church in Dunellen, as they come forward and get into place. Holding his Bible will be Emmanuel Cummings. That's his son, who is a seventh grader at Howard Middle School. You guys can fan in right behind me here. Also with him is Lisa, his wife, and Eric II, his son. And Mr. Cummings' district includes several Ocala schools, plus many of our schools located in southwest Marion County, Dunellen, and the Marion Oaks area. So Pastor Hardaway, you step in here. I'm gonna step out, and you folks know what to do.
All right. The Bible.
We'll get the Bible. Hold on just a second.
All right. You gotta turn. Oh, wait. Yes, sir. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the Government of the United States.
The Constitution of the Government of the United States.
And the State of Florida.
And the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of.
Marion County, Florida, school board member.
Marion County, Florida, school board member.
On which.
On which.
I am now about to enter.
I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this morning. Appreciate it.
We will move on to District Four. That is Mrs. Nancy Thrower, and we welcome her, as well as a new school board member this morning. Giving her oath will be Reverend James McKinnon. He is the pastor for Lifeline Community Church in Reddick. And, folks, you can come on up. Yes, absolutely. He and Mrs. Thrower talked together at North Marion High School, and she's considered him a friend, colleague, and advisor for more than 20 years. Can run over here. Holding the Bible and to my right will be Robert and Mary Barger. They are Mrs. Thrower's parents. And we're looking for Fred, her husband, who will join us up here, as well as James, her son, who just arrived, I understand, from Ole Miss, just in time for this. So, James, if you're in the house, please join us up front here.
I'll see you in the home.
Okay. Mrs. Thrower's district includes many of the schools in and adjacent to Ocala city limits, including Hillcrest School, where she left just a few days ago after 14 years on that campus, helping students with exceptional needs. And I see your former boss sitting out there as well, so. Pastor McKinnon, come right on in.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
The Constitution and Government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Marion County.
Of Marion County.
Florida school board member.
Florida school board member.
On which I am now.
On which I am now.
About to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
How to get that in there?
Kids, I'll start with kids, of which there are several of my students here today. Eric Cummings. Mr. Eric right there, hello? Griffin Reynolds in the back. His dad, Mr. Carey, is a teacher at Lakewood High School, and several other students. And that's why I'm here, for you. Family. I couldn't be more blessed to have had the upbringing that I've been so grateful to have. So Mom and Dad, thank you. I'd like for you to just take a quick second and look over to your neighbor and shake their hand and say something like, "We're here for kids." And what's so incredibly exciting about this is that I started my journey in 1997 as a special-needs classroom aide, they called them then, ninth through twelfth at North Marion High School. And what an adventure that was. And Dr. Marilyn Jackson, and it is now not Jackson anymore. She's been married for a while, but I'll always think of her as Ms. Jackson. If you would just stand up, Ms. Jackson, because you have been my role model, my mentor, my encourager for almost 22 years. You always believed that I could and should do more, so thank you. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for you. I've got the behavior support team in the back representing, Danny Craig, Sienna Benel, Julie Boivier, incredible people, Marion's United for Public Education, who's done so much for our community, different teachers from North Marion High School. The person that you can't even begin to introduce, that would be Mr. Neesman. Also, members of transportation are here. I've ridden a lot of buses throughout the years to help kids and help them, and it just really goes to show you that it is about kids, family, community. It's a golden opportunity for us. Let's make the best of it. Thank you so much. I can't wait to serve.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will move on to District Five, and representing that district is Mrs. Kelly King. She comes back for a second term, having been approved by voters earlier this month. Gage, her son, will be holding her Bible this morning. And Stephen, her husband, will be a minister in the oath. Mrs. King was first elected to the school board in 2014, and this is her second term, as I mentioned, and she represents District Five, which includes most of our schools in North Marion County and several charter schools. Go ahead.
Oath of Office. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And Government of the United States.
And the Government of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the State.
Under the Constitution of the State.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of.
Marion County, Florida, school board member.
Marion County, school board member.
On which I am now about to enter.
And I, where I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
And where I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. I'll just make mine short and sweet. You'd think, after being up here for four years, I would be accustomed to being up here. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I just want to say what an honor and a privilege it is to serve Marion County, and I thank my supporters, and I thank this community. And in Luke 12, verse 48, basically, in that scripture, it talks about when there's much given, much is required. So with 43,000 students, 6,000 employees, and a budget of over half a billion dollars, I take my job seriously, and I am very honored and thankful and grateful to serve my community. Thank you.
Once again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us for this historic meeting. Now, let me share just a couple of reminders with you. The school board holds two more meetings immediately following this broadcast, and then they have another one tonight at 5:30 PM. So four board meetings in one day. So they're very busy today. We hope that you have enjoyed what you've seen today, and for those of you who are joining the board, our two new members and returning Mrs. King, thank you for your service. Those people who have volunteered themselves to be in public office sacrifice a lot, and we appreciate your time and your effort and your energy for our kids, because that, as you said, is what it's about. So we'll go into a standby mode now for the next few minutes until the next school board meeting begins.
When we do the voting, go slow, because I have to handwrite. Are we on? Oh, hi. Okay, I call to order the November 20th, 2018 special school board meeting. The purpose of this special meeting is to organize the board as required by Florida statutes. The board will determine meeting dates, time, and place, and elect a chair and vice chair. Will you join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I recommend the board readopt the present regular meeting dates, the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month, with the exception of the second Tuesday in March, which is spring break, the second Tuesday in July, which is our vacation, the fourth Tuesday in December, which is our Christmas break, as well as move the fourth Tuesday in November to the third Tuesday in November because of the FSBA conference. May I have a motion?
Second.
Reverend Cummings, second, please.
Second.
Mrs. King, is there any discussion? Okay. There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, so moved. Five to zero. I recommend the regularly scheduled meetings of the school board of Marion County, Florida, begin at 5:30 PM. May I have a motion?
Second.
Ms. McCall. Reverend Cummings, second. Is there any discussion? Okay. There being no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Let the minutes reflect the motion passed by a vote of five to zero. Okay. I recommend the regularly scheduled meetings of the school board of Marion County, Florida, be held at 5:12 Southeast 3rd Street, Ocala, Florida, in the board chambers unless otherwise specified. May I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Ms. Thrower, seconded Reverend Cummings. Is there any discussion? Okay. Being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Let the minutes reflect the motion passed by a vote of five to zero. I recommend scheduling three special meetings for the school board of Marion County, Florida, as follows. Monday, February 4th, 2019, at 8:45 AM, which is out-of-field personnel. Tuesday, July 30th, 2019, at 5:30 PM, which is the public hearings on the tentative budget. Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, at 11:00 AM, which is the organizational meeting. May I have a motion?
Second.
Ms. McCall, second.
Second.
Ms. King, any discussion? Okay. There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay.
I would like to nominate Kelly King.
Second.
Mrs. King, by Mrs. Stacy. Mrs. King, do you wish to accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any further nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Beth McCall.
Nomination of Ms. McCall by Mrs. Thrower. Ms. McCall, do you wish to accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Okay, there being no further nominations, the nominations are now closed. So all in favor of Ms. King as chair state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm handwriting. Okay, let the minutes reflect, Mrs. King has been elected as chair 3 to 2. You got that? Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Okay. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations of vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Beth McCall, vice chair.
McCall by Ms. Thrower. Ms. McCall, do you wish to accept the nomination?
I will.
Are there any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Reverend Cummings.
Okay. Reverend Cummings, do you wish to accept the nomination?
Do.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Okay. There being no further nominations, the nominations are now closed. All in favor of Reverend Cummings as chair, oh, I'm sorry, let me go back, all in favor of Ms. McCall as chair, say aye.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, thank you. As vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. All those in favor of Reverend Cummings as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the minutes reflect that Reverend Cummings has been elected as vice chair. Okay. I now pass this down to Mrs. King. Congratulations. And we need the script. Pass that to, please.
For the record, I acknowledge that Florida statutes 1001.42 and 1001.48 require that the superintendent shall be the secretary and executive officer to the district school board. Additionally, Florida statute 1001.371 states the district school superintendent shall act as ex officio as the secretary. I also acknowledge that Elena Martinez Lopez is currently serving as the board's clerk and Nicole Prestapino is currently serving as the board's deputy clerk. Furthermore, I wish to remind everyone that School Board Policy 2.223 states all school board meetings shall be conducted in accordance with the parliamentary procedure set forth in the most recent edition of Robert's Rules of Order. There being no further matters to come before the board, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Cummings and seconded by Ms. Stacy. Is there any discussion? Okay. There being no further discussion, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. Okay. And let the minutes reflect that the meeting is adjourned at 11, I believe, 37? I can't read it.
34.
11:34.
11:34 AM. I call to order the annual meeting for the Board of Directors of the Marion County School Board Leasing Corporation at 11:38 AM. Let the minutes reflect that the following members of the Board of Directors are present. Nancy Stacy, Beth McCall, Eric Cummings, Nancy Thrower, and Kelly King. Also in attendance is Dr. Heidi Mayer, the Superintendent of Schools, who serves as the secretary of the leasing corporation; and attorney Paul Gibbs, the school board attorney, who serves as the attorney of the leasing corporation. Let the minutes also reflect that a notice of this meeting was duly published in the Ocala Star banner and that notice was provided to each board member. I direct the secretary to attach a copy of the notice to the minutes of this meeting. I will now call upon the leasing corporation's attorney to advise the board concerning the corporate officers.
Good morning. According to Article 6 of the Articles of Incorporation of the Marion County School Board Leasing Corporation, the members of the school board shall be the directors of the corporation. Unless the members at their annual meeting shall determine otherwise, the chairman of the school board shall be the ex officio chairman of the Board of Directors of the corporation; and the vice chairman of the school board shall be the ex officio vice chairman of the Board of Directors of the corporation. According to Article 8 of the Articles of Incorporation of the Marion County School Board Leasing Corporation, unless the Board of Directors shall provide otherwise at their annual meeting or special meeting, the chairman of the Board of Directors shall be the ex officio president of the corporation; and the vice chairman of the Board of Directors shall be the ex officio vice president of the corporation; and the superintendent of schools shall be the ex officio secretary treasurer of the corporation. The duties of the officers shall be as set forth in the corporate bylaws.
Do I have a motion to follow the procedures set forth in the Articles of Incorporation regarding the election of the chair and vice chair of the Board of Directors?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Thrower, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Is there any discussion? See, and then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, like sign. And the motion passed, 5-0. May I have a motion to follow the procedures set forth in the Articles of Incorporation regarding the election of the ex officio president, ex officio vice president, and ex officio secretary treasurer of the corporation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Thrower. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, like sign. There being no further matters to come before the board, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Mr. Cummings. The meeting, oop, may I have a motion to vote? All those in favor, signify by?
Aye.
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 Okay. And our meeting is adjourned at 11:41 AM.